Living on that park is on full, they got blow in the ride, I lose Cadillac. Still got my homies to watch my back in the smoke your ass. And when I come jack, that's why some pigs and the kids come sweating, they follow. Hollow voice still time to swallow. Why, why, hello, if they come to roll on it with the clip in the roof, I break your head's mind. Not kicking us, cause he need to get bust my crew so wrong that I'm about to get brushed. A brush with that. How many shelves left in my closet with my bag of all nice black. When the shit goes down, better be ready.
When the shit goes down.
The shit goes down, you better be ready.
When the shit goes down.
Goes down, you better be ready.
When the shit goes down.
Goes down, you better be ready.
Better be ready.
I told the police to sign our class and the rest of the guests as I struck on the bulletproof vest. I think I caught one to that test. Hot damn, I didn't want to kill a man. She is still stand tall with the hail clan, yo, you better step back, you better fall. I'm coming up blasting like it's a mini Sam. I got cheese and a bread for them. Shit goes down, you better be ready.
When the shit goes down.
Shit goes down, you better be ready.
When the shit goes down.
Shit goes down, you better be ready.
Shit goes down.
Shit goes down, say.
Better be ready, yeah.
The following show features stupid opinions and ideas from two idiot brothers who probably did little research and practiced zero due diligence on the topic at hand. The envelope as opinions do not reflect the views of their employer, guests, sponsors, families, neighbors, or pets. If you don't like what they are saying and don't agree with their views or opinions, don't watch the show. We can promise we do not care. Welcome to the worst show on the internet.
Hello, everybody. Welcome to the show. We are the ML bros. If you've never watched us before, my name is Luke. This is my little brother Isaac. Across from us is.
Yeah, that's what I please do.
Get that there. Guy is Dennis, or I guess I should say commissioner. Malloy Dennis, Denny, what do you go by?
Uh, Denny.
Danny, okay, and Isaac.
To make him comfortable.
Yes.
You have two jobs tonight.
What's that?
One, you have to talk like he's a commissioner, so you have to talk like Batman. And then two, anytime he gets loud or rowdy, you have to say point.
Point of order, point, point of order, point of order, point of order.
I feel like I'm at home.
Sorry, I've literally been waiting to say that for a month. All right, Mr. Malloy, welcome to the show there, sir. Thank you for coming on. We were, we've been a little, but we have really been meeting him, haven't we?
No, other, I mean, other than.
Well, there are, there are some things I had to clear up first. I mean, the shocking over the shoulder, that's me, that's just me. And that was an old, you know, that was my first campaign when I was an independent. So I am a Republican and when I won last time, I did run against a Democrat that was thirty and oh, been in office for thirty eight years.
Did you beat?
Mike O'Brien.
Okay.
Undefeated his whole life in politics and I beat him. But I was a Republican. So, so you were a little, you know, I was a Democrat, like a trafficking Democrat back in the day. And then I went to the middle as an independent. I said, you know what? I can't take the left and right. I can't take Nancy Pelosi. There's no Democratic president I'd ever vote for. I've always voted Republican. Why am I a Democrat? The only reason I was a Democrat was to play the game like most everybody in the Mahoney Valley. So they can vote for who their commissioner is, who they can vote for whatever. So finally I woke up one day, I got woke, but on the right, on the right side and said, I'm a Republican. I mean, I believe in guns, I'm pro-life, I'm Catholic, the whole nine yards. I said, this is, what am I doing? What am I doing? Stand with these Democrats? So I went full-blooded Republican. Voted for myself in the, in the election, much like Nikki Frenchco, my, my compadre. She was a day, she ran as a Democrat and lost, ran as an independent and lost, then ran as a Republican and won. And was never Republican until she voted for herself in, in the general election, just like me. Although I get accused of being the Democrat on the board. But, but like many people, I'm just a Mahoney Valley guy. You know, when it comes to politics, the partisan stuff is what gets you in the door. Once you're in the door, you need to just put all that aside and work for everybody.
I, you talk real fast.
Yeah, you're not.
Hello, there you go. Was my battery dead or something?
I don't know. Sorry, it's a train wrecker, by the way. No pun intended with the.
I feel like I'm in Garth and Wayne's basement in Aurora, Illinois. Like I walked into a set of Wayne's world.
Yeah, that is us.
You only do this to get out of the house away from the wife and kids.
He does it to avoid bath time.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Very nice.
So we were talking about something.
Okay, wait, wait, wait.
Set the stage.
Let's set the stage.
Okay.
So we were just kind of covering his background a little bit and.
Just doing our pre-show stuff.
Pre-show stuff, just kind of, we normally don't talk about it. But you had said, and everybody listening to this, this is absolutely insane, which you're about to hear.
Mind blowing.
Mind blown. Go get, go get that.
So we, but.
Get that picture.
Okay, so we grew up, we grew up with our spaghetti dinners on Sundays at Grandma McHugh's house, right? And Grandma McHugh was a huge Jimmy Trafficant fan, huge. When he was in jail, she was writing to him non-stop, all the time. She talked about how she sent him like painting stuff because he didn't have any. As soon as he got out of jail, she had him over for dinner and it was like made her world that Jimmy Trafficant came over for dinner.
Uh, I had to go with her to like, when he got out of prison, I had to go to like his rallies and like, I mean, I have pictures with them.
The welcome home Jimbo thing.
I had to go to all that stuff. I have pictures with them. I think by the end of it, he was going to be Luke because I was grandpa's, you know, I was there. So today, you used to work for with him?
Yes, when he was a friend, he was a hunting buddy of mine. I always admired him growing up and he's hunted in Trumbull County. I was a game warden and I hunted the same farm that he did, so I became friends with him that way. Yep, so we became good friends that way. He went off to art schools, he says, and when he got out, he reappeared on my show at the time on WK being the outdoor icon show. And invited me over for breakfast and then when he basically came back, didn't know who to trust anymore and lost a lot of friends and people. He went from the mighty Jim Trafficant to some people. He found out who his real friends were, I guess, put it that way. And the real core people were still there. We were with him, we were with him. He did the Greta Van Susteren, he did Hannity and Combs at the time. He did Chris Matthews and Wolf Blitzer and all that stuff. And we were with him through that time as he kind of reintegrated back and he never missed a beat. When he came out, he was as electrifying in his speech as he was when he went in. Now, things changed a little in his, his last couple of years, his views had changed a little bit and he's drifted away from the way he was back in there. Maybe I should say the times moved on beyond him.
Yeah. Just use the other one, Luke.
Hello, yeah, I'm trying to hear.
Sorry, there we go.
Well, you figured, we always thought the wired connection would be best and work, but.
Winnie Joe Daniel, just here on.
We do, we do.
But anyway, so you are getting to talk about this picture and it's clearly it's traffic. I have one myself. I have got the John Wayne one. He did, you know, three hundred or so while he was, while he was in the.
We, we pulled this, okay, when grandma passed away, that's what I got. Okay, just for the record, this is what I got. Priceless, this is what we got. We hang it in our studio.
Funny thing is you point out, you're like, oh yeah, he customizes my grandma, put an M in the moon.
Notice the M, the top right corner, the M.
And I said, he does that to all of his paintings. Every one of his paintings has that M up in the.
And why?
And from what I heard was there was someone that got him started with art supplies, he was in prison, that wrote to him religiously. And as a tribute to whoever this M was, which was his mystery woman until today.
Till today.
Grandma McHugh, M is for McHugh.
We have a stack of letters from, from Jimbo to my grandma that big. It's gotta be her.
We might've solved the mystery. He never confirmed or denied it. On why the M was there, but the, the legend that I had heard was there was someone who was faithful that motivated him to paint. And was a faithful follower and that was a tribute to her, to her when.
Faithful follower, grandma was a faithful follower, you wrote to him all the time. That's freaking bonkers.
See, the price that I just went up now, now he sees jealous, he didn't get it.
In.
That is so freaking cool.
Same.
That is.
They're saying we're frozen.
Audio issues.
What?
We're frozen?
Are, are we seriously frozen right now?
Hello?
Let me go on.
Dude, we're moving around. How is this happening?
Let me see.
Dude, we're. Hello? Dude, there's no way.
No, we're good.
We're good?
Yeah.
Fine here, there we go.
Yeah, so did you hear that? Everybody hear that? The M, we, we have pretty dang sure the M and Jimmy Trafficant.
Whether it's true or not, we're believing it now.
It's gotta be.
As far as this room goes.
There's no way.
The way that I presented to you and the way that you said it was just too magical.
Yeah, yeah, no way. Yeah, I wish, I wish we would have gotten it the original, uh, the original figuring that out on, on.
There's just no, yeah, there's just no way.
My god.
Because we have a stack of letters from Jimbo. I, we know he, she was mailing him.
Yeah.
We know she sent, she sent him art supplies over and over and over. We know that. M is gotta be from a queue.
That's wild.
That's pretty.
That's insane.
Pretty cool. I get little chills down the back.
That's wild.
All right, I cannot wait to tell Aunt Patty and everybody.
Yeah. He's got some Jesus prints, he's got the Johnny, just whatever hit him. He's got a lot of Dracula, he's got a lot of dark stuff. But these things are priceless.
Yeah.
We have. Find them in art galleries.
Yeah, yeah, we'll hang that.
You need to read those letters.
I don't know.
I don't want to read those letters, man.
I don't know if I want to read those letters.
So, so tell us a little about yourself. Where are you from originally?
I went to Cardinal Mooney High School, west side of Youngstown. And I grew up hunting and fishing my whole life. You know, I was a city boy.
Yeah.
But I would go up to Mosquito Lake in Trumbull County hunting fish. I get inspired early on and wanted to get a career in wildlife, went to W, went to WVU, West Virginia and got a degree in wildlife. The day I graduated was the day I started as a game warden in Ohio. Worked as a game warden in Cuyahoga County, then transferred over to Trumbull County. And then went to Whitelands Limited twenty-three years ago, which is a national nonprofit conservation organization doing, dealing with deer and deer hunters, raising funds, gun raffles, golf outings, things like that. For conservation programs. So I've been around the hunting my whole life around hunters.
Yeah.
Now, the commissioner thing, I've always been involved in politics as far as advising people on gun.
Okay, so gun rights is.
Gun rights, outdoor things, whether it be governors, I've had senators, I've had presidential candidates that have come to me over the years. Hey, we got this bill, explain this to me or, or what, put this to me in layman's terms. And I've always been happy to do that, no matter what side of the aisle you're on. So I was kind of known throughout the Mahoney Valley as like the go-to gun guy. If you got a question politically about guns or the outdoors or hunting, go see Denny.
So wait, you originally ran as a Democrat?
Yes, no. Originally we ran as an independent, never ran for anything as a Democrat.
But you were registered to Democrat.
I was, I voted Democrat to pull a Democratic primary to vote for somebody. If I would have pulled a Republican primary in Trumbull County, I would have had nobody to vote for except every six years.
Just to vote on the ballot, he was a Democrat. That's how messed up that is.
Yeah, that's.
And that's pretty much, if you look at Mahoney Valley citizens out here, there are many of them that consider themselves Republicans. That still pull the Democratic ballot because they're union or this or that in the primary. But in general, you could vote for whatever. And I found in general, I always voted for Bush, I always voted for Portman or whoever the Republican was. I was a trafficking fan, I was a Ted Strickland fan, you know, but the guy he ran against wasn't, wasn't a gun guy. But Ted was, had a hunting heritage, so I pretty much always voted for the guy that had some type of farming rule or hunting ties. I never voted for anyone in my life that was anti-gun and I never would. So that's kind of where my, I'm, I'm like that one issue voter. But that's the voter that gets me. If you're gonna try to take my guns away, forget it. I don't care what party you're in. I'm not voting for you.
And you're allowed to, and people are allowed to do that. I, I mean, there's no doubt about it.
Absolutely.
I, I blend all of my things together, you know what I mean? Cause I, I, I like guns, I like, I like fishing, I like, I like outdoors. Uh, I think the, we've talked about this before, I think. Do you want to smoke weed? Smoke weed. You want to get married to a dude? Get married to a dude. I don't care. You know what I mean? Whatever.
Yeah, whatever floats your boat, as long as you leave, leave other people alone and I don't care.
Just don't have friends on my race.
Yeah.
Don't start on me.
Yeah.
Exactly.
That's kind of where I come.
Exactly. So it, you know, it's, it's kind of the way it is, so.
Well, and politics wise, I got tired of being the guy always bitching. And like, why don't they do this? Why don't they do this? And some, someday someone's got to do this. Someday someone, 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 someone.
Yeah.
And then one day I'm like, I'm driving on the road and it just hit me. I'm like, you know, I'm, I'm at that stage in life where I'm securing my job, secure with my house. And it's like, I'm, it's time for me to give back. I've always taken, I've always been kind of the selfish guy a little bit with my time and my vacations and where I hunted and that type of stuff. And I always cared about my community, but I said, I'm not going to be the number two guy anymore. I'm gonna, I'm gonna give this a go. There was a guy who was running Democrat unopposed. I said, can't let someone run unopposed, just give him a job. So I threw my hat in the ring, I ran as an independent, got forty-seven percent, which was unheard of. I mean, the number, I got like thirty-six thousand votes as an independent, which the valley has never seen before.
I would love to see that happen.
And then I said, you know what? I'm in this to win it now. There's things need done with Mosquito Lake. You know, my big thing in Trumbull County, Trumbull County is weird, it's clickish. And as long as you're from Niles or Warren, you win every time because that's where all the votes are. And then you got twenty-three other townships through the county that are rural. They're spread out, there are people like us, you know, guys who live on Mosquito Lake and farmers, they got five acres of land, whatever. But there aren't enough of them to beat the vote in Warren and Niles. So the Democrats always controlled that belt. And so we've always had county commissioners and every county official from Warren and Isles, maybe Gerard now and then, you know, just an oddball here and there, but never from the townships. So I said, you know, damn it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna break that mold. The townships need some love too. We need somebody that understands farming. We need someone that understands tourism, fishing, hunting, the outdoors. The bald eagle nest, the river otters, the turkeys, whatever. We need these townships to finally get some love instead of everything south of three oh five in Trumbull County.
Makes sense.
So I ran, I ran on the backs of the townships. I, I learned from where I ran the first time where I needed to key in more on the cities. I concentrated on Warren Niles a little bit more with parades and, you know, I had a good campaign team. And we broke the mold and I beat a guy who was undefeated, Bobby, the, you know, the, the king of all Democrats in the Mahoney Valley and. And Mike O'Brien and here I am. And now we're making strides and we're, we're throwing love out to the townships, to the, to, everybody in the county feels like they have a seat at the table now to have equal representation. I love that.
Speaking of counties, um, well, townships, I guess. Robert Santos is up there, Austin Town Trustee says, Denny always answers his phone, no matter who it is. And then Angel says, uh, you, you, you and Denny both answer your phones, giving Santos a, a pat on the back too. But yeah.
Rob's a good guy.
Yeah.
Dedicated, dedicated public.
So with you winning as a Republican, Nikki was a Republican when she won?
Yes, and like you said, she ran as a Democrat.
Lost.
Ran as independent, lost, ran as a Republican and really what put her over the edge is you had Trump on the ballot, twenty twenty.
Right, so it's a huge right.
Huge, huge voting down there. And you had Frank Fuda, the sitting Democrat on there, who was running, didn't like Polivka, the guy that was there. So you had this anti-Dan vote, you had this pro-Trump vote, which cracks me up because Nikki was a never Trump. She never did anything with the Trump parade. We'd have a Trump parade, flag waving. I did two boat parades in Mosquito Lake, we had like eighty-five boats, patriotic, I mean, bald eagles flying over, it was great. And we'd have a flag waving for Trump, you know, to celebrate him in his election. And she'd be the one out there in the Nikki Frenchco shirt with the flag, with the Nikki Frenchco flag and everyone's like, be a team player, you know, be a team player with this thing.
People at home, that's why you take a note and realize that's why it's not good to go right down the line and just check off every Republican. Nikki Frenchco is your lesson to be learned there, ladies and gentlemen.
I, it was just one of those weird years, you know, is, is one of those weird things where they didn't like the Democrat that was in there. You know, she had tried so many times and.
This is it.
And, yep. I don't know how diehard of Republican, Isaac and I are very, like he just said, we're not, I'm, I'm registered independent, like, I don't. Like, that's because I refuse to vote.
To pick a side.
Yeah, because I think it drives divide. I think it causes problems.
I think the sides, the sides are the biggest issue itself.
A hundred percent.
A lot of times they are.
Yeah.
Makes sense. I don't see why a sheriff, why a judge in a primary?
Right.
Why your county engineer? Why even your commissioner? Am I gonna like approve a, a budget bill to someone, an officer or someone that's more Democrat than you? There just doesn't fit. There's, there is no, we're not solving gun stuff, we're not solving abortion, we're not doing any of these issues in county government. But you gotta play the game. You gotta, you gotta have that partisan thing to get the funding behind you so people understand who you're with.
Yeah.
And for the first time ever, I'm proud to say, in Trumbull County, we had more Republicans voting a primary than Democrats for the first time ever. And Trumbull County voted for Trump twice. Mahoney County finally did also. So we went from no Republicans in the county. I ran as an independent with Republican support. That year Nikki did win. We got a state rep that won, we get a state senator that won. Wow, that's big stuff. Ran last year again, we got another state rep, Nick Santucci, that won. We had our county auditor, Martha Yoder, she won and I won. So now we are more Republican in Trumbull County in two short election cycles. We're more Republican than Democrat, unheard of, absolutely unheard of.
What I want, and it's a big ask, you were so close, you said you almost won as an independent.
Almost. And I would have loved to do that, I would have loved to have done that.
You were close and our buddy here, uh, almost won for the fifty-ninth, Eric Angaro. He was that close until.
And Eric was much like me. Eric was a Democrat, of course, he had that in his blood from his father and stuff. And but he's, he's more of a conservative type of Democrat. I've met Eric, I know Eric, and he ran as an independent. Man, people I think still labeled him a little bit more to Democrats to be embraced by the Mahoney County Republicans.
Democrat.
And you look at what Gino did too. Gino came this close. I mean, Gino came, give him one more day and knocking on doors and he's the commissioner right now.
Yeah.
And just fell that short, which really, really hurts, but he's up against Ditzler next time and I think Gino's gonna.
Uncle Dave, Uncle Dave. Have you, did you see any of that stuff?
I did, and we, we, I, I can't speak ill of Dave, I don't know him.
Okay.
But I'm very glad you bashed it on him. He's like, he's like public.
Oh, Hagan?
Oh, Hagan was another one.
Can I ask you?
I had a couple runs with him.
We don't have to talk about. The boast about how good of a person Hagan is, like, was it his wife posted that or who posted that? Like, he's such a good person. I've, I've seen him say terrible, terrible things.
So, so for those of you.
Terrible.
Ninety people watching, for those of you who are wondering myself, we're talking about Bob Hagan who ran against Rully. Again, I don't know, we've hung out with Rully, he gave us a bunch of turkeys one time when we gave out turkeys.
He helped us when we gave away the turkeys, yeah.
So, so Hagan, I, I don't know what, I saw Hagan in post attack some military veteran.
Yeah.
Okay, like attack a mil-, so on the ML overs, I went after Hagan. Like, who do you think you are? So then he came after us and for God's sakes, he regretted it. Because we attacked him for like five days in a row.
Tagged him and everything.
And, and he would comment back and he'd be like, you guys are blah, 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 and then we would just annihilate him and then all of our followers would go after him. And we were calling him Uncle Bob, this, I mean, and eventually it'd block us because it was literally getting to the point.
He got, he got brave once before and he ran against Trafficant when Trafficant was in his prime. He thought he, I can take Jim Trafficant. Trafficant bounced him around like a little basketball and that was when Trafficant coined the line. When Bob was talking about all the stuff he brought back from Columbus and Trafficant looked at him and said, you know, Bob, the only thing you ever brought back from Columbus was a paycheck. And the whole crowd went nuts and I kind of destroyed from there. He was always, you know, basically Trafficant's bitch.
Yeah, it was Rob. He, he told me I was below the service of my country. Cause he was, he's a military veteran.
Told him that because he didn't agree with what Hagan was saying. He said he was below, I'm like, are you out of your mind?
Yeah, and then he recently, Bob Hagan recently posted about how he can sleep well at night knowing he's a good person or something like.
Dude, that's a, that's a stretch.
So then the other day, again, not to change the subject, but real fast, again, I know you don't want to.
Does this show go till like midnight? I hope so.
We could talk all night. We got time, we got time. I just want to read real fast what county commissioner, Mahoney County Commissioner, let's get that straight. Mr. Ditzler said to us, so now we have a new uncle because Uncle Bob blocked us. We now have Uncle Dave. Uncle Dave basically said, let's see here, uh, he said, with the best one, hold on, let me find the best one. The best one, he insulted our podcast. He said, you know nothing outside of filling the internet with obstin-, uh, unstantiated, wait, obs. Unsubstantiated BS, what have you done for anyone but yourself? That's towards us.
Yeah.
He said, this is, this is a county commissioner.
Yeah.
Talking to us this way.
What have we done? Have we done anything?
I don't know. I'll trade you ten Dave Ditzlers for what I got.
Oh, oh, we were talking about that. He said, we're a threat to democracy. He said, uh, let's see here.
I said, what have you done? Have you stolen any signs lately, sir?
Yeah, exactly. He called us a bunch of wannabe politicians.
Wow, I do not want to be a politician.
I mean, he was amazing, but this is a county commissioner. Would you ever attack people on Facebook? Have you done that yet?
You know, I had, I had a few instances where I did fire back and fortunately I got a good campaign manager.
Yeah.
And she either deleted or took my phone off me before, before I could go back any further because I, I, I can. You know, I, I don't have very much a tolerance to for stupid people.
Yeah.
And there are haters that sit there, the keyboard warriors that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Haven't walked in my shoes. They don't know what it's like to go out there and get on the campaign.
Yeah.
And really, you know, care about this job and really care to help people. And then they want to criticize you from something, it's like a sucker punch from the back row.
And I'm like, you don't really, they have nothing to lose, you know what? They have nothing.
When I.
They're, they're shooting out into the void trying to get your attention and then when they get your attention, they're, they're on the hook and they're really.
I do, I do.
You can't let them. But there's Joe bite the hook, man.
But there's a difference, there's a difference. We're stupid podcasters.
Yes.
He's a politician.
True.
That's, I don't give a shit.
Yeah.
He has to, but like, I don't care. I know, I'll go back.
Joe, Joe Daniel says, this is a perfect show.
Joe Daniel taught us well.
He did.
He is my, he's my mentor and idol, and idol, so Joe.
You know what? He's my mentor and idol too. I love you too, Joe.
We love you, Joe. Let's see here. So, so, all right, so let's talk before we get, we're gonna get into deer, the Mill Creek Park here, because we have an expert here. Like a real expert versus everybody on Facebook.
So, so tell us what it's like working with, I'm a big fan of Nikki.
Well, I gotta tell you this much.
You're a big fan. I know, I'm just, can I explain to you why I'm a big fan?
Well, here's the thing, she should have an agent. She should have her own TV show.
It's amazing.
She, and, and she, she's got skills that way, but to be in the position she's in, not everything she says is wrong. But it's the, it's the approach, it's the delivery, it's the way you deal with people. It's the, the.
There's a little bit of hypocrisy.
Narcissistic attitude a little bit, the Jezebel spirit type of thing that goes on. And, you know, I, I could talk to her about something in one minute, it's great. Next minute, you know, I'm, I'm Mr. Fat Guy sitting next to her or whatever and, and she'll get with words and it's like.
Yeah.
You know, we gotta move forward in the county. We gotta, we have to, there are real issues, real people's lives at stake.
Yeah.
Real issues in the county every day.
Yeah.
And worrying about, gotcha, I got you on this, you didn't do that correctly, you didn't dot that I, you didn't cross that T. There's no place for that in government. I mean, we're all have good hearts. There is no, you know, I, I'm, I'm a nobody that came out of nowhere that, that ran and I'm trying to serve the public best I can. But if you read what she puts sometimes, it's like, you know, like we're all criminal cronies, like this is back in nineteen eighty Democratic politics, Mahoney Valley, it's not. We've moved on, we've moved well beyond that and we get accused of stuff all the time. So with that said, yeah, there's some issues there, there's some issues there and, you know, we always offer the olive branch. We want her to come and deal with the public meetings, she refuses. So all we can do is go on and do what we gotta do. I mean, we, it take, one commissioner can't buy a pencil, two can buy a building. And that's the attitude that I have right now is, is focus on what we can do, focus on what he's done in the county. Try to stay away from the drama, the distractions, the April Fools jokes and all the BS and everything else that's going on. And just focus on how can I serve my community better tomorrow? And just focus on how can I serve my community better tomorrow? And what do I need to learn today so that I can be a better commissioner tomorrow?
Respect that.
Your, your opinion, and this is an opinion, so you don't get sued or whatever. I, I guess you can't.
I'm already there.
Yeah, you're already there. Yeah, we're going to talk about that. I have that pulled up. Um. Is she mean to the employees?
Horrible.
Horrible.
Where I've been in my office and I gave, I, you know, I, I thought it can't be like that. Can't be that bad.
I'm just wondering.
I listened to the meetings and I thought, yeah, it can't be that bad.
In the meeting, my favorite part was you said, well, you're, you're so mean to the girls in the office. And she goes, excuse me?
Cause you're not allowed to say, or, yeah, the girls.
Girls is a bad word. Well, I mean, well, I mean, the people in the office. And then, and then two seconds later, she calls the other guy.
Morrow. She goes, Morrow.
She calls Morrow, honey. And he's like, don't call me honey. And it's like so hypocritical, like.
Rules, rules don't apply to you. Not for me. And that's what needs to change. And that's the only way people are going to accept her and then respect her is in the position she's in.
How's the new HR, how's the new HR manager?
Awesome. Rock star. And I knew it when we interviewed her, that this girl was someone that's tough enough to handle the job. Cause this isn't a, a normal search circumstance you're walking into. She's walking into an HR job with baggage, an HR job with a, with a history.
Baggage is a fricking under. She's got a frigging airport of baggage.
She's absolutely awesome. I'm proud of the work she's doing now. I think the county is way better that we have her on board with us. And when you talk about the employees though, I've been in my office and heard screaming and I've heard yelling and I've heard get this and do this. And I've told her many times. They're not your maids. They're not your servants. The days of get, get me coffee, make me copies are done. These aren't secretaries. These aren't personal assistants. These are clerks. These are people that have real jobs that have a real, I mean, these are good paying jobs.
Yeah.
I'm capable and qualified to do my job. I don't need administrator. Morrow's capable. She's capable. The three of us can get up and get the stuff we need on our own. We can attend the meetings and do our own work and come in prepared. If she doesn't want to do that and wants to put the work on somebody else, that's on her. She can get her own person to do it. I have to defend the employees with that because I've seen it with my own eyes. I'm the one that sent the employees home because I, I saw two employees crying that day. So I got to the point where it was so bad. She was yelling, screaming. The sheriff's deputies didn't want to touch her.
Because they're going to get in trouble.
Past litigation, but they had a, the arrest that went bad. And she would not deescalate. And I kept telling her, calm down, calm down, calm down. And finally, I, finally, I think I said, she's like, I'm calling, I'm telling the this, this, or I'm telling the state auditor, I said, you know, you call the president, call God. I don't care who you call. You, you're not going to treat people like this. You're not going to do, you're not going to come and have an attitude like this. I got people getting off the elevator, turning around and going back down the elevator. Cause we got a woman out there just screaming, going crazy and all this. So.
Wait, it's the classic. It's the classic. Oh shit.
That's it, yo. Going down. Walk out, walk out of the elevator, just keep, just walk back, like, like just backpedal back into the elevator. Five deputies with their hands in their pocket, like afraid, you know, waiting for the call to do something or not do something. So I said, you know what? If you're not going to deescalate her. And she's like, I'm not going anywhere until someone helps me and gives me what I need. And she went into the human resources office and I said, everyone go home. We're done. I can't have the public deal with this. I can't have her come out and let the deputies go and do what she was doing before. And it was, it was bad. When they called me, you know, commissioner, where you at? We already called the police. She's going off. She's pounding on doors. She's screaming at, at a clerk. It was just, it was an ugly situation. And thank God, some of the girls, the women in the office, employees in the office, they did, they did their own tapes that day that'll come up when we get to court.
Yeah.
Excited about that.
So then the lawsuit comes and I pulled it up. We, we're already, I was going to pull it up. Go up to the comments real quick. Up, up, uh, I just, just saw one that was pretty funny. But Dawn, Dawn says, but you have to admit Nikki's hair is a lot prettier than Danny's.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
That's good. That's good. That's good, dog. Uh, so sad.
Mine didn't get a chance to go gray. Yeah. Hers does.
Uh, Morrow and Dennis have their hands full. Uh, it takes it. And it's funny is Morrow's a Democrat, right?
Yes.
And you guys are working great together.
Doesn't matter. Morrow's a, oh, Trumbull County citizen. The ones, what's best for the people.
Yep. Danny, in how many days does she really come to work? So that's interesting. So, so.
The lawsuit then, this is good because we've always.
Yeah. What's, what's?
So, so we've covered the Open Meetings Act and, uh, again, which is, which is important because we've called like Steve Kent in trust, uh, Austin town about the Open Meetings Act where he was trying to pass stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, on, uh, um, so you sent people home.
Yes.
Called Morrow.
Well, here's the thing. If I were to just send people home on my own.
You're not allowed.
Takes two commissioners to do something.
Can't make a decision.
So I'd have been, I'd have been accused and sued.
Okay.
Morrow was on the phone in the office and one of the ladies in the office said, commissioner, we have Commissioner Cannon Lace on the line. Do you need, do you want to talk to him? I said, yes. I said, Morrow, she's going nuts here. She's yelling. She's not deescalating. She refuses to calm down, go back to the office. The deputies don't want to do anything, but just stand here and not do anything. It's a dangerous situation. It's a hazard right now. I got people getting off the elevator. We got people trying to get passports across the hall. It's an unsafe work environment. I'm going to send the people home. Forty-five minutes. It's like, like forty-five minutes for work's done anyway. And he says, yeah, that's probably a good idea. So I admitted I said that. I'm not lying to anybody about that.
Yeah.
So now I'm getting sued for making a decision with a commissioner without 24 hours notice and notifying the media.
So.
So I'm supposed to do a press release to the Tribune and say, in 24 hours, I'm going to send everybody on. Four hours to make sure everybody knows. And, and, and then she's suing one of the other commissioners, the guy before me. Cause Morrow and him got together and canceled work on a snow day. How do you not? I mean, it's snowing outside. People want to know. His superintendent calls schools off.
Wait, is that, is that, is that Frank?
Yeah.
This.
This is called transparency, which you've been preaching since you got elected.
Points of order. This has to deal, your discussion has to, shut, stop with the fucking gavel.
Stop that language in this meeting.
No.
No.
She gavelled me. She took my gavel too, son. That's a normal.
She dropped an F-bomb in a frigging meeting. Oh my God. Sorry. I just wanted, I was saving that clip too, for like, like six months.
You've been dreaming about this for a while.
I've been so excited. Somebody sent me that today. Uh, Tony Mars sent me that today, actually.
Yeah. Um, so Frank's getting sued for talking to another commissioner and making a decision. It's dangerous on the roads. We're shutting the county down today. We're shutting them, all county workers. Isn't that what you're supposed to do as county commissioner? How do you know 24 hours in advance and notifying the media that tomorrow's going to snow and be an ice storm?
So she's trying to say that there's like illegal stuff going on, but it's nothing but, the reason it's happening is to protect the people.
I would say what I did is an emergency situation. I would say what Frank and Mara did in that situation, an emergency situation.
But, but.
We'll have our day in court.
Yeah. In emergency, emergency situations though, you don't have to give a 24 hour notice.
No.
Yeah, that, that's what it's.
But she's got this guy that works with her.
Yeah.
And he's, he does nothing but make a living on suing town shows, boards of education and municipalities. That's what he does for a living.
What's his name? We gotta get him for the poll. We gotta get him for the polling village.
And he, he is known for doing that. And he's, he's making his way around. He's suing Mahoney. He's suing trouble.
Yeah. Okay. We gotta get his name after we're done. Cause we're going to.
Contacted.
The polling village lawyer. We got a problem with that guy, frigging jerk.
Well, yeah, sometimes it needs done. Sometimes it needs done. But, you know, we're all for good government. We're just trying to do our jobs. And Morrow and I go in there. Yeah, we're trying to do our jobs. We're trying to do what's best. We need a dog pound. We need a new nine one one center. Uh, we need a new health department. We need to up, we need, we need morale back. Right now, county workers are scared to death. They don't brag about where they work. And, and I'm sick and tired of everywhere I go, people asking me, she really that crazy? I went to my aunt's funeral a couple of weeks ago and I run into some people I haven't seen in like 30 years. Everyone's mourning, they're crying, the casket's up front in the church. And I run into someone, the first thing they do, give me a hug. And they're like, man, is she really that nuts? Is she all that crazy? And I'm thinking, are you freaking kidding me? There were like five relatives that wanted to ask about that and next old, next door neighbors and everything. They want to know about her. It's not enough talking about her. Enough, you know, it's, we got to move on for something positive. We can't deal with that every single day of our lives.
Well, until she's gone.
It is fun to talk about.
You're gonna.
I get it. It is. And it is, we had, I'll, I'll give you this and then she's probably listening. She'll get a big smile out of this.
Guaranteed.
Loving it. She wasn't there last week. People came unglued because they couldn't see their favorite show on her TV. They, they don't like her, but they just, that's the only way they can see the drama. And when they could see us and I had people watch our feed and say, eh, you know, we see you. It's like watching C-SPAN. We want to watch her to see what crazy stuff she says.
No.
Oh, it's the, we want to see her flip the hair. We want to see her, you know, adjust the look and, and stuff like that.
It's this, it's the. And that's what I always say too.
Right. Yeah. They're, they're not all friends. She gets a lot of views, but they're not friends. They're just people creeping there. They want to see what's going on.
Oh, I do. It's always, and, and the first people to rush a defender are the guys with cars in their profile picture. And like the, the, the 45 to 65 year old guys fricking love her and always run to her to.
It's always, I, I don't want, I mean, it's always funny how her dress is too though, right? Like the cut. Let's be honest.
Well, the other thing that frustrates.
Let's be, I'm going to say it.
The thing that frustrates me is she talks about how it's all about the people. I'm recording this for the people. You can literally, lady, you can literally turn your phone sideways and get all three commissioners, but she keeps it vertical. So it's just her.
Yeah.
It's like, it's that easy. Like if you really are doing, like just turn it sideways and put everybody in it. Instead of like.
It's all about that. It's about the comments and it's about.
She has to be in it and like.
We were talking, Pat, we're talking about, uh, Nikki Frenchcoat, uh, the, uh, commissioner, uh, Trumbull County Commissioner right now. Sorry. She's jumped on. We're keeping it pretty up space.
Reset the pins.
Reset the pins.
It's like a radio show.
Yeah. Reset the pins. Uh, yeah. So that's.
I mean, I do feel bad for her in a sense of, cause I, I mean, I've seen her in places before where I've been in with other politicians and other dignitaries. And they're all whispering behind her back. They're all pointing at her. They're all, I mean, you'll see her walk around and.
Yeah.
Someone, eventually someone will be nice and, you know, cordial or whatever. How you doing commissioner, this and that. But for the most part, you watch her walk around. It's pretty sad.
Yeah.
It's like, damn, that's, she dug herself that deep that these people here are mocking her. They're talking about her behind her back. They don't respect her. They don't care.
Yeah.
And I don't know if she doesn't get it that they don't. She's just got balls that big that she doesn't care.
Yeah.
Or if she just knows and just keeps moving on.
From what I mean, from what I think, it's what I read and see, she thinks she's doing the county a favor.
Yeah.
Fighting a war against the old guard, but you're new. You're new, right? I mean, you're, you're.
I'm no, I'm not the old guard.
Yeah.
And I'm not connected to any, I have no relatives in Trumbull County. I have nobody that works there. I never got anyone a job ever in my life.
Yeah. And then she's being mean to the county employees because, yo, I'm trying to fix it. And it's like, that's not like, I was going to talk about this. That's not how you.
Wrong way.
You win them over and get them to do what you want. That's not.
Yeah. And you're trying to like, you're trying, you're like trying to expose people and pin it on them.
Yeah, it's crazy. It's always that got you moment. She wants to be the one that says, gotcha. Like she's the one who would burn the house to the ground just so she could get the credit for saying, I called nine one one.
Yeah.
And to be in front of the camera when they got there to interview about the fire. It's not right.
Yeah, that's, that's a problem.
And I mean, and here's something too. I'm not trying to jump on and bash on you. There's more positive stuff we can talk about.
Yeah.
But there's an instance coming on right now with nine one one. You know, and I, I just had to do a big thing to turn over to the state ethics investigator and the attorney general's office for her. Calling nine one one to talk to somebody on a nine one one taped line.
We listen to those tapes.
You heard that. Well, then I looked, someone put, posted on Facebook, she called nine one one like 23 times.
Yeah, we, we listen to everyone.
How many times have you called nine one one in your life?
Yeah.
I was a police officer and I called nine one one maybe six times in my life when I came and called you, whatever.
Yeah.
Twenty-three times in like three months? That's like crazy cat lady stuff.
Yeah. We, we listen to every one of them. We listened to like the sun call. It was, yeah.
It just doesn't make sense. There's an issue there somehow. You don't just, I mean, you're the boss there. You know every number. You know their cell phone numbers. You know. Every non-emergency number there. And you're just going to call nine one one and ask to talk to.
You're wait, at that point, you're wasting, you're wasting a good line for somebody that could legitimately use it.
There's two nine one one lines there. She tied them up for three and a half to four minutes apiece every time she calls. God forbid, somebody would have been with a heart attack.
Yeah.
And they're, they're calling, 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 calling. And she wants to know, how do we, where do you file this report? I mean, you can't do that.
Um, what, what, so, so the county commissioners, nine one one roads, what else do you guys?
Well, you got the highway engineer, county engineer deals with the roads. We deal with the jail. We deal with job and family services, all the welfare, all the child abuse, domestic abuse stuff. We deal with all the budgets for the courts. We deal with, uh, uh, human resources, of course, the county, uh, building inspectors. We've got the ag center. Um, God, there's so many. We got the planning commission, which is crucial. There's 20, like 2,500 employees in Trumbull County.
Yeah. Wow.
Most of them are under the, under the county commissioners.
Yeah.
Now the auditor has their branch, you know, the recorder has his branch, the clerk of courts has hers. But all these other county departments, you know, all these different department heads that we have. They all fall underneath the, the county commissioner, nine one one, the sheriff's department. That's all under the county commissioners as far as their budgets and their money. Sheriff runs his department, but we, we run the budget and the, the, the tax dollars that come in all come through the county commissioners.
Yeah. You guys oversee.
And that's how we function. It's on tax dollars.
Makes sense. It makes sense. Did you ever fire anybody because they weren't in your political party?
No.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, we, I've, I, we did, we did have to fire a couple of people and it's not an easy.
Were they, were they not in your political party? Did they, did they, did they not vote for, did they show up at a recount? And you know what I'm talking about, right?
Yeah. That's not even on the radar.
Okay. I was just want, okay. Just wondering, because down here in Mahoney County, Dave Ditzler and Carol Spaghetti, that's what they do here. They, they meet in secret and fire janitors, spaghetti. Fire janitors. Yeah. You did it, Ditzler. Uncle Dave, you did it. I know you did. I can't wait. Uh, sorry. I'm never going to be over there.
With anything like that. I, I could tell you, we do take our job seriously, especially with the scrutiny we're under. Everybody's on guard. The stress and anxiety level is up high. And I think everyone's trying to do their job doubly correct.
I'm sure.
Just to prevent any scrutiny or they don't want her to have that moment of, I told you so, you know, that I knew you were doing this wrong. And so everybody really, really tries really hard to make sure they do everything correct. And within the lines.
That's gotta be tough. I mean, that's gotta be tough.
It's tough to live that way. It's tough to come into work every day and wonder if today's the day.
Yeah.
That you're just minding your own business and, you know, and, or it's like, you're an ant. It's like, hey, I'm going to get up today. It's today, the day I'm going to get stepped on by an elephant. You know, or it's today, the day that I'm going to, you know, find a piece of corn and carry it back to the nest. You don't know. When people come to work, it's like a crap shoot. But I'll tell you what though. The employees that are there do not deserve to be treated with disrespect in any way, shape or form.
Nobody does.
They're valuable assets. Every employee we have, they're.
They are just going to work.
They're humans doing their job. They don't need to be dealing with that. I'm not the emperor. I'm, I'm, I'm one of three county commissioners put there by taxpayers to oversee the tax money and to make sure things function properly.
Yeah.
And that's all. I'm a coworker and, and gosh, she hates when I say that, but I am. I'm a coworker with them. I'm not their boss. I'm a coworker. And in my opinion, you ask, if I ever fired anybody, really? No. And I never will. Cause my philosophy is you fire yourself.
That's fair.
Everyone knows their policies, procedures and rules. If you break them, if you violate them, you're firing yourself. I don't have, I'm not gunning for anybody. If you don't perform the way you're supposed to and you're a disruption, you're causing problems or it's habitual, you're going to fire yourself. That's it. It's not me.
Remember that, Isaac.
A hostile work environment I work in, working for my older brother.
Shut up.
That's a great time. With all these people watching, uh, the MLO stands for mortgage loan originator. We were actually loan officers and he's my boss. So, uh, call me if you need a home loan. I'll take care of you and Luke will yell at me as I write your loan up.
This was big. I'll tell you what. I mean, I knew about you guys. I watched, you know, the dating game music thing, meet the commissioner.
I have that saved. Do you want it?
Funny. People go back in the archives and watch.
You missed it too. Somebody commented, hey, I, I think, uh, Dennis, I think that's the same shirt that you wore when you had the shotgun over your shoulder.
No, it's not. That was an orange one. I, but I am a funny guy. I'm a regular dude.
All right. Listen, I'm not going to play, I'm not going to play it now because we're literally going to be, this is going to be like an hour and a half show because we're going to still talk about the deer. I will play it after. Listen, like 87 people watching, do us a favor, follow the MLobers right now. Just click the little three buttons and follow us. I will play the Mahoney or the Trumbull County Commissioners, uh, meet the Mahoney, I keep saying it, meet the Trumbull County Commissioners.
Like I said, I wasn't, I wasn't Republican when I ran. You, that's the old.
It's the old, that's the only video.
Also, uh, down below, could you please give us a like, a thumbs up, a heart, a laughing face, whatever you can down below. Get us a like. It helps us out. Also check out the, uh, our sponsors down below, uh, Century 21, Agent Kelly Heron, Valley Insurance Group, as well as the Fantastic Tales of Merryweather and Perryweather, a children's book from a local author. Check all those people out down below. They're awesome.
And share with your friends too.
Yeah. Share this. Share, share, share. That's the way to do it.
Some people watching, they got 4,000, 5,000 friends.
Yeah. Share, share, share. But, but, uh, yeah, you have, yeah. Nadine said, I love that episode. It is, but anyways, we'll play this thing. I made this clip of, it's, it's like an intro. It's the, uh, it's the, what's the, it's the old 60 show with like the dating game theme. It's the dating game theme. And, uh, dude.
It was actually very impressive. You did a good job.
You got skills.
I came up with that. I came up with that like 10 minutes.
You got like Joe Daniel and skills.
Joe, Joe and I were really good together because he's like real organized and I'm all over the place.
He's chaos. You gotta.
I am chaos and Joe's super organized, pushes the chaos.
We need to show those two on a road trip together. Joe's.
Yeah, it'd be great. Yeah.
My goodness. I feel like the odd couple.
Uh, Joe and I go ghost hunting together. Did you, I don't, we go ghost hunting. So it is literally like the odd couple when we go.
Tony, Tony Mars says, point of order. We have to, we have to talk about, we have to, we have to talk about.
Point of order.
We have to talk about deer in Mill Creek Park.
All right. So, so before we talk about that, uh, let's do this. Good luck with that whole Nikki thing and, and the county thing, getting sued and all that. I, I don't think, I think if you're in politics, you're going to get sued just the way it is.
You know what? If we got good attorneys, our attorneys beat her attorneys many times before. That's why we got them. We'll move on from this. And we're going to keep doing what we're doing. We're going to, we're deer. We'll get beat on this.
All right. We're going to talk about deer. Um, okay. So deer, let's just set the stage here. I'll, I'll try and do it and then we'll, we'll fill it. So Mill Creek Park, uh, has decided that, or did a survey.
Mill Creek Park, the biggest park in city park in Nash, in the nation, I think.
It's something like that.
Yeah, something like that.
Biggest metropolitan.
Yes, that one.
Maybe we should ask the.
I don't know. Mill Creek Park, ever heard of it?
Maybe we should ask the ODNR guy that was like 30 years.
And I get, and I get the unique skillset. I've worked at the park through high school for years.
Grandma McHugh used to talk about that all the time. Mill Creek Park.
Then I worked for ODNR and I would do what I do.
Biggest metropolitan park.
And the parks have come, had a survey last year. Uh, they flew a night vision drone. Over not just the park that you think of, like the, the park with like Cossack Trail and all that stuff, like all the park areas. So like Struthers and the one south of 224 and like Hitchcock Woods and over off, uh, where grandma's at, where your houses.
Yeah.
There's that little thing over there.
Yeah. Off of Western Reserve.
Yes. Yeah. Uh, off of, uh, Blosser.
Okay.
Or base, base. Yes.
No, that's off one sixty five.
Yes, you know what I'm talking about?
So all that's Mill Creek Park still, all the way there.
It's different sections. Stuff down, yeah, all the way to Springfield.
That's right.
Yeah, there's a little creek down there by the airport. It's all Mill Creek Park.
Yes.
So they did a bunch of surveys and they said there are three hundred and fifty five deer per square mile.
Okay.
Three seventy eight and it's absolutely bogus.
Okay. Hold up, hold up. We're gonna get there.
Oh, so you don't think there's that many deer?
Hold up, hold, hold, point of order.
Okay.
Point of order.
Okay.
So that's what they presented and then they now have come up with a plan that they're either gonna pass or not pass.
Okay.
That says there will be two ways to call, C U L L, the deer.
Call, yes.
Call night vision governed paid snipers.
Hell yeah, bro. Have you seen those videos? Those videos are sick where they had the night vision and they shoot the wolves and stuff. Can we record that, please? That is so sick.
Point of order, point of order. Then, and that is gonna be north.
Yeah.
Of two twenty four in the populated areas.
Okay.
Okay, so, so then that way they're not having a bunch of frigging hicks like me.
How do you get that job?
I don't know.
Night vision guy?
It's not what you think it is. I'm seeing these guys before the guys that they're hiring for this.
Yeah.
They're just a couple of rednecks to get legally poached. That's all it is.
And then south of two twenty four and some of those other areas that aren't as populated, they will raffle off or Lotto off. I wanna say it's like thirty two tickets a day during like hunting season for archery and some during gun.
Okay.
Um, and you get to bring a friend. So it's like sixty four people a day in, but again, it's like spread out in the areas.
Yeah.
Um, so how did I do?
You, you sound like you work for the park.
Well, I read one of their articles.
Okay, right, yeah. So you're drinking the Kool-Aid.
I'm not drinking the Kool-Aid. That's all I had was, that was, that was, that was the vindicators.
I would like, I would like to hear what he has to say.
Yeah, I was reading the vindicator. Again, this is not biased.
Point, point of order, point of order.
I grew up around the park. I worked at the park. I worked for ODNR. I know all this, all this works. We've done deer surveys before. There's been credible deer surveys in areas like Ogilvy down in West Virginia.
Been there.
Uh, Sharon Woods in Columbus.
We flipped.
The north side of Pittsburgh where they've had deer populations, overpopulations where they've tried birth control, they've tried trapping, relocating. They've done snipers, uh, Kioga Valley National Recreation Area in Cleveland Metro Parks, they've done the surveys. And I could tell you right now, three hundred and eighty seven deer per square mile equates to a deer every one hundred and twenty feet in Mill Creek Park properties.
That doesn't make any sense.
Think about that for a second. If the park were doing the survey of us in the room right here, we'd have seventy seven people in this room right now, according to their data. I'm dead serious with you. This data is so bogus that we asked about who did the survey? How much experience do they have doing the survey? Alright, what were they paid? We know some of that stuff. This is new technology, this infrared thing. I don't think they can count that many squirrels and raccoons in the parks.
Yeah.
Three hundred and eighty seven per square mile, which equated to like three thousand deer living in Mill Creek Park.
Yeah.
Or thirty, more than three thousand, which means they wanna get it down to one and twenty, which they're saying they need to kill two thousand nine hundred deer in Mill Creek Park. You can't find two thousand nine hundred people from here to the old mill if you tried and, and they, they think there's that many deer in Mill Creek Park. It's ludicrous. I saw that and I'm like, that's a mistake.
I don't think that.
There would be no vegetation anywhere.
The dooms, like planet of the apes, you know, there'd be nothing.
I all of a sudden just pictured like the snipers, fire and just deer just charging them.
Well, didn't they like, at one point they like gassed geese, didn't they?
Yeah. Gassed them, threw them in a dumpster and thought the people wouldn't notice when they came, showed up the next day with their basket of bread and there's no geese.
They got the guy who wanted to gas the geese. They found him, they found him in South America.
I mean, that was horrible, horrible PR. And now they wanna get back into this and it's like plant life versus deer. Yeah, I think the deer ones, I'm a hunter. I'm as big a hunter as anybody watching or listening right now and I'll err on the side of hunting all the time, not against hunting. They need to hunt some parts of Mill Creek Park, the outer areas, the areas that used to be hunted, the areas, the border areas where you can hunt.
Right.
I mean, to keep the population down. Now to get from two twenty four all the way to the Youngstown, north side of Youngstown, no. You don't need to hunt in those areas and they have a deer population, not an overpopulation. Until Aaron Young or that board can justify without smiling and laughing and breaking out laughing.
Yeah.
Their data that there's three hundred and eighty seven deer per square mile, it's all moot point. Killing any deer is off the table.
Yeah.
I mean, it, this is ridiculous. This is the most oversight of government I've ever seen in my entire life. And I am a thirty year deer professional that deals with deer every day of my life.
The vegans.
Hello?
If you, if you look at, if you look at the deer surveys where they have called deer, you look at Ann Arbor, you look at these places where they had massive deer overpopulations, they weren't half of three hundred and eighty seven deer per square mile. Three hundred and eighty seven deer per square mile means that we're like ten times more than any other place in the country that has a deer overpopulation.
So what do you want?
Aaron Young, are you freaking kidding me?
Survey it or something?
Well, yeah, get us a credible survey.
Yeah.
Show us what the real data is. I was on the park board, they had an advisory board a couple of years ago. This is important.
Yeah.
They reached out and they said, we wanna get the best people for all these new advisory boards to advise the board on what to do best. So they got me, they got the Mahoney County Game Warden, they got presidents of sportsmen's clubs, they got Susie Bieber, who was a woman sportsman. We had eight people that between us, I think we figured out we had like a hundred and eighty years of professional wildlife paid experience. So we were on this advisory board, we talked about the geese, we went over raccoon control, we got the deer. You know what they told us? We haven't had a deer complaint in like four years. I said, okay, well, if you get a complaint, we need to hear it. Finally, one came in from someone that boarded Hitchcock that a deer came and ate her flowers at night. Okay, we got a complaint. Do we need to do anything? No, we don't need to do anything. It's not an overpopulation. It's not a problem. There's no other issues through the park. So you know what they did after that? They fired us. They got, we got an email and the whole advisory board was let go. They replaced us. And you know what they put on the wildlife advisory board? Botanist, plant, plant biologists and a whole bunch of environmentalist people that are on the wildlife board. There is no wildlife professional on the wildlife advisory board, not one. They replaced the best of the Mahoney Valley with people that they can control.
The botanist wants to get rid of the deer for eating all the plant?
Absolutely.
That's what, they actually said that in the article.
You know, the, the rose garden and the plants in the park are a thing. Now there's always other controversies about people that wanna reintroduce plants into the park. And the, and the park director, he was a landscape architect, I believe, before here, which means he's the guy that went out and designed flower beds and stuff for a career and for a living, horticulture. That's his background, not wildlife. And, and so for them to come and try to tell a civilized society.
Yeah.
To scare them by saying there's that many deer, when I hear three and eighty seven deer, I'm like, oh my God, you know, this is like zombies. We need to get out there with a baseball bat and start killing, and start killing them before they start killing people. That's untrue. It's false. It's bogus. We, they just hired an attorney from what I understand. So you're getting injunction. They hired Mark Dan.
Yeah.
You know, everyone knows Dan from back in the day. Good choice, but they need to get to these park board members that were appointed by Judge Rusu and tell them you need to listen to science. Look at this study and look how fake it is. This is fake news. If I ever saw it in my entire life, show me a real study. If you show that we're like thirty five deer.
I was gonna say, let me ask you.
Deal with that.
What, what in your mind, being the expert, would call for a calling a deer in Mill Creek Park? What number?
You get over like maybe over forty to fifty deer per square mile on a park setting.
So forty or fifty would do it.
It's almost ten times more than that. Ten times.
So, so if the survey came back.
Aaron Young is the Fauci of park management.
I think he's coming on our show, if he still will after all this shit goes down. No, not Fauci, that's Aaron Young. He's coming on. That, well, hold on, uh, uh, if, so let's say a survey came back, Dennis, and it comes back at fifty five, right? Per, per, would you be for a calling?
I would be for controlled hunting. I wouldn't be for paying one tax dollar to go and pay somebody to take a deer out at night.
Okay.
From the back of a truck over a bait pile with a light.
Okay.
That's poaching.
That, okay.
That's, that's animal control. These deer in Mill Creek Park through COVID and everything and, and I'm, I'm not getting soft in my old age.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not a cat lover guy type or whatever.
Yep.
Crazy.
Yep.
I, I love the animal to death.
Oh.
And I respect the animal and, and yeah, I, I eat deer. I love deer. I love the.
You hunt?
Absolutely. Like crazy.
Yep.
But there's a difference hunting in this setting here with what they wanna do. I mean, there's, there's a guy who has a Facebook page for all these deer.
Yeah.
And he could tell you whose deer is what, who's, who, who their mother is, who the father is, who their sisters are. He's got the whole lineage. He's like the twenty three and me of Mill Creek Park deer.
Yeah.
And they all got names and people come and see them and these deer aren't hurting anything. They're, they're wanting, they wander neighborhoods at night. That's what deer do. They eat, they come back in. The biggest problem is people feeding them.
Yeah.
People, you know, they wanna see them. That's why they got corn piles around Lake Glacier and Glacier Heights and all around these different areas. All they're doing is, is leading that deer ultimately to death. Cause what's happening? They did the survey.
Yeah.
They did the survey at a time when the deer congregated together either over food source or bedding. And they fly over with that drone. They see, wow, there's eighteen deer there. Well, let's multiply. How big of a space is that? That's like a forty yard circle.
Like a survey.
Then they assume that every forty yard circle in the park has eighteen deer. It doesn't. You gotta add some common sense into this thing.
Well.
And realize they were feeding or they were bedding and that's why they were grouped up and they're not grouped up. You might not see another deer for a thousand yards. But, but they, in their data that they put together and their rocket science data with, with no professional wildlife experience or no wildlife management or forest management plan in Mill Creek Park, they came up with this, well, we'll call them and, and it's, it's unheard of. It's absurd.
So you're saying they're calling because of the foul, it's the people supporting the flowers or whatever.
It's so interesting. I never would have thought that the enemy of a vegan isn't necessarily the hunter. It's a botanist.
That makes sense.
It makes total sense, but you never think about it. The person who loves the plants, the vegans hate that they're killing the animals. The botanist hates the animals because they eat the plants.
But, but I do have some things to touch on though, about this topic that are probably gonna piss some of the people off watching right now.
Okay.
And I'm okay with that because it's fine. Can you count the amount of deer in Mill Creek Park and say, and let's just say we didn't know the survey?
Alright.
I go walking down Cossack Trail around the, around the park. Could I say there's a problem with deer, yes or no? Based on what I visually see as a hiker?
In certain areas of the park, yes, where the vegetation.
Cossack Trail, Cossack Trail.
Alright, you gotta understand too, we're at that time of the year, people are looking now, this is when everyone's aware.
Yeah.
And they look at the parks, they're like, holy shit, there's no, there's no leaves, there's no vegetation, there's nothing. Well, guess what? It's fricking end of winter, Einstein.
Yes.
The, the plants haven't blossomed yet. Give it two months and you won't, like a turkey hunter knows this, you go in the woods and see for a mile. You get out there, second week of turkey season, you can't see a turkey coming at you from thirty yards away, cause everything greened up.
Right.
Spring hit and everything turns green and everything blossoms and grows. So they are looking at the park right now. They're scaring you with, look at the damage in the park now. They're scaring you with a, an inflated survey and they're trying to brainwash people to believe, we need to get out there and kill these deer.
I was looking at it another way because people on some of these Facebook groups are literally saying, I didn't see any deer today when I went for my mile hike. So there's no deer problem. Again, I'm not saying this is really fun. I am just saying some of these people in these groups.
Obviously those numbers are a little overinflated.
They're overinflated, but these people on, these people on Facebook are freaking insane. I don't care what you say. Some of these people that again are against these deer, you could say there are five hundred and fifty deer per square mile. Right? Apocalypse, they're gonna not want those deer killed.
Yeah.
You understand what I'm saying?
Of course.
But like some of the, I guarantee it, some of these people on here that are watching right now aren't because they are pets to them.
And here's the thing, and here's where I.
It's the anti hun, it's the anti hunters.
It wouldn't matter how many deer on that, on, on, in the park, they wouldn't wanna kill them just because.
Well, and here's the thing, we don't, we don't even need to have that argument though.
Okay.
If we had real data from the park.
Then we can have that argument.
Then, then, and then we don't, but at this point, and like I told this part, I went and spoke for all these people.
Yeah.
I went in the lion's den, you know, Danny Moy.
Luke, go in the comments.
Whitetail hunter.
Yeah.
And I went in the lion's den and spoken for all these.
I couldn't believe you did that, by the way.
And I said, here's where we need to break it down. You're all, we're all here because we love deer in some capacity. Okay? Let's eliminate sharpshooter, hunter, this, that. Let's just get down to basics. Let's look at the data of why the park says there's a problem.
Yeah.
And we've, we've, we get the true data, there is no deer problem and we can all go home and you can love to watch the deer.
And I can love to eat them.
Hunt the deer. Deer burger.
Right.
And you go home and take a picture. It doesn't matter. We don't need to have that argument. The park is what wants people to have this argument.
A little bit. I, I have to, you have to read this comment scroll up. No, a little higher, a little higher.
Uh, Stacy says, I really want to hear more about deer birth control. That's where, that's where I am in life. Is it a patch, a pill? And then Tony Mars says, I think it's called Plan D.
Surely, actually, there is no, no real, real deer birth control. Cause you could, we can go give them the pill and put it in the food.
Yeah.
But then what happens if that deer gets hit by a car and you take it home and feed it to your wife and kids?
Oh shit.
Then what happens?
No, wow.
What happens if a bald eagle eats that carcass?
Yeah.
Can't do that type of stuff. So, so what they do when they do birth control, they go out, they shoot the deer with a dart. They catch it. They have a little mobile, uh, emergency room. They set it up, they tie the tubes, they let the doe go back up. They did this and they did this in many cities. They did this in Cleveland. Three years later, the deer population was twenty percent higher than what it was when they initiated that. And they, then they spent two hundred and eighty thousand dollars giving vasectomies to deer. And, and they were fur, they were further along down the road. Cause you, like with the bucks, one buck out there. You don't care. If you try to do vasectomies on the bucks, all it takes is one, he'll go and breed the whole damn herd if you, if you let him.
If he, yeah.
Now with the does, you're not gonna catch them all. And then the does, when they see their populations are going down, mother nature, nature kicks in and she'll let her have three does. And here's the thing about.
Isaac, nature finds a way.
Here's what I, here's what my thing in my, all my whole career of being a deer biologist, what I believe. There are bucks in the park that are mega bucks. There's like four bucks that there are pictures of.
I've seen one that's absolutely.
They call them, they're a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty inches of antlers on their head.
Yep.
Healthy like Bambi's dad type deer.
Yep.
And there are, the does are heavy.
Mm-hmm.
You don't see the bones sticking out of them. We don't find any deer dying of starvation. And I've seen starvation. I've seen it in the Kioga Valley where we found thirty dead deer once, all within a hundred yards of each other. And they had full bellies, full throats and full, full mouths. Cause they were eating stuff that it took more energy to digest than they were getting from it. So they literally ate themselves to death. When they started eating bark and pine cones and pine needles.
They don't have anything.
They're on the way down. They're not doing that in Mill Creek Park. We're not having that. The first thing you would see in an overpopulation is reduced beam diameter. If the deer are unhealthy, if they're not eating, getting enough nutrients.
You're seeing ribs.
Their antlers are gonna, you're, they're gonna see the ribs, they're gonna come out of winter and not fit and they're, first thing it's gonna affect is their antler growth. You're not gonna see mega giants like the park has if you got an unhealthy deer herd. So what, what the Mill Creek Park is doing right now goes against all science in the, in America. And I mean, there are deer biologists been around forever that look at this data and they're laughing at us.
Yeah.
And, and we got a guy who's trying to play magician, like watch over here while we do this over here. Can't have that.
I got a.
Can't, can't buy, can't drink that Kool-Aid.
Before we wrap this up, I got a gun guy question for you.
Yes.
So, um, I get in this argument with libertarians all the time. Like I agree with a lot of what the libertarians stand for, but there's one thing. Being a gun guy, where do you draw the line? Like what is too much that a citizen should have in guns or weapons or whatever? What is too much? Where do you draw?
My limit, I mean, there are some guys that say there is no limit.
Yeah.
Shall not be infringed bazookas.
Yeah.
We have background checks and sportsmen understand that and they buy, buy.
Yeah.
And, and I would be, I'm one of them will go on a limb and say, I don't want a bad guy to ever buy one of my guns. I mean, if I ever sell a gun and I found out you committed murder with it, you robbed somebody.
Right.
I'd be devastated. So when I'm selling a gun to you, which happens, I usually don't sell guns. I've sold like one or two in my whole life.
Yeah.
But I would like to know if you're a good guy or bad guy. There's nothing that lets me do that.
Yeah.
So if they came and said, all right, private sales, you and me gotta go into a gun shop. They'll do a background check on you and the gun dealer will just give me a thumbs up or thumbs down. I don't need to know what you did. I just want to know that you can pass a background check.
Yeah.
Then I could do my private sale to you. Right now, I could take you out, out in the parking lot and I could sell you a gun right now.
And that's what, that's what's happening at gun, at gun, gun shows.
No, gun shows, most of all gun shows.
They don't do anymore.
They, they self-police themselves. They make you go through a background check.
The libertarian argument would be, well, that's not, even if you put that in place, that's like a law in place that there has to be a background check. Doesn't stop people from privately getting together and selling each other guns. Cause you're a good person. You care that the person you're selling the gun to isn't a piece of shit. But some people just don't care.
But if you get a driver's license, you need a background check. We talked about this before.
You should, yeah.
Uh, another question. Um, bobcats and wolves release them in, uh,
That's what I was saying. The vegans can't get mad at that. That's mother nature.
Bobcats, bobcats, mountain lions.
Okay. Some bears and some wolves.
Well, bobcats are already here. They've, we just had a guy trap one in Trumbull County. They're everywhere in Columbia. They're through Mahoning County.
Grizzly bears.
Bobcats aren't gonna affect the deer population.
Yeah, they don't, yeah.
They're, they're not, they're not a deer predator.
Like, like ten grizzly bears?
Bears. We do have bears wandering Ohio too. And a bear will take a fawn, but when there's an abundance of other food, and there is no bear overpopulation.
We need, we need something more aggressive than a bear.
Bears are omnivores.
Get rid of bears.
Scrap wolves out, out of the question. We do have coyotes.
Why not?
Coyotes all over. Coyotes aren't bad. Coyotes help thin things into the populations. You get in a wolf thing, you open a whole new can of worms.
They are, are they not, are they not?
We already have problems right now with, with somebody's, you know, Shih Tzu getting eaten by, getting eaten by a coyote. Now can you imagine someone's horse gets eaten by a wolf? Yeah, that's, that's a whole nother.
The wolves don't work, we go get lions.
Now, I think mountain lions, those are a natural Ohio thing, right? I mean, you're dope.
Here we go. Watch, give me one second here and we'll see him pop up here and talk about it. He knows who I'm talking about.
You need to add in mountain lions, like fifteen of them in the, in the Mill Creek Park.
Yeah.
That's a natural.
Mountain lions, dude, people will be getting jumped on.
Besides man, the only predator deer have in, in a park setting like this is a Goodyear tire.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
That's the only predator they have, cars.
Yeah.
And maybe they'll get run by dogs.
Yeah.
You know, and, and get run to death. That happens occasionally, but, but most of the time the deer will get away from that. But Goodyear tires and man are the only predator. You take man out of the equation, then we just let the deer overpopulate till they all get hit. And there was, there was a time when that little stretch of two twenty-four where the park crosses over.
Yeah.
Hitchcock Woods area.
That was real bad.
That was one of the top areas in the state according to highway patrol, roadkill collision slips in the whole state for car deer accidents. There was a time back in, even in the seventies and eighties, that was a hotspot for deer getting hit, hit by cars. So we've had deer in the park.
Yeah.
For a while.
They're there. I mean, they're, they're there. I mean, I've seen them walking.
We did a hunt twenty years ago. I don't know if you guys remember or not, but Lobo Rod and Gun coordinated it. They drew permits. People hunted Mill Creek Park. Here we are, twenty-two, twenty-three years later.
Deer though, when they did that, right?
They did. They did get, they got enough that we haven't had a deer problem for twenty years. Nobody's bitching about it.
What, uh, what, uh? Yeah, we're gonna wrap this up here too, by the way. Um, I was gonna say.
I'm just getting started.
Yeah, I know. What, uh, what was the other thing I was gonna say about the deer? Do you think it's safe to hunt not obviously in the main part? Do you think it's safe to hunt in those others, some of those other spots?
And that, those claims, that's what I'm trying to tell people. Don't be out there saying I'm worried about my house getting shot.
Well, that's, and that's what I'm saying.
That's not an issue. That's something that they're gonna, that's background music. They're not gonna listen to.
You hear that? Stop saying it, you fricking psycho.
We hunt all over the state of Ohio in urban settings, all over the place and problems like that don't happen. You don't get arrows through windows. You don't get, it doesn't happen.
See, that's, yeah, I've been keeping my mouth shut.
You gotta eliminate the fictional things and when you cut it down to the bare facts.
Yes.
And the only bare facts I want to know is, show me there's a deer overpopulation. Show me it's negatively affecting the deer herd. Show me it's negatively affecting the health of the deer herd and the health of the ecosystem.
Right.
And then we can talk.
Right.
But until we do that, dude, don't talk to me.
Because the, the problem is, and I'm gonna help you anti hunters out right now.
Oh yeah. Less than, fewer than thirty-five people in North America since Benjamin Harrison was in the White House have been killed by mountain lions. Bring them in. Bring in fifty mountain lions. That would be so dope. I am gonna help, I'm gonna help you save the deer people. Stop trying to fight fear with fear. Okay. And I know some of you aren't gonna get what I'm saying because I'm, I'm sorry to say this. I don't think you're, you're gonna, you're gonna brighten up to it. I'm not insulting, I'm just being honest. Some of the stuff I'm reading, okay, I am. Some of the stuff I'm reading in there is absolutely ridiculous. And it makes your cause look ridiculous. When you are insulting hunters, saying, you're gonna go in there and you're gonna shoot bows and arrows through people's houses and you're gonna shoot guns. All you're gonna do, and you pissed me off, is gonna piss off hunters and you start pissing us off, then you're gonna be like this and it's, it's not gonna go good.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
We had that meeting at, at Arco Fields, baseball fields or Kramer Field, or what they call it now. And it was by the end, honest to God, I was hugging people.
Yeah.
Because the people there are wonderful. They care about the deer in their way. I care about them in my way, but the bottom line is we all care. But if you eliminate, if you eliminate the crazies, like if you eliminate the guy who wants to go out there and whack every deer, here's my thirty odd six, where they at?
Right.
And you, and you eliminate, also eliminate the person that says, oh my God, lock the kids up. I gotta keep and take my kids to the hotel for the weekend. Cause there's deer hunters in the woods. You eliminate those two extremes and you got the people in the middle.
That's.
And there's not much different here, other than they, they, we're consumptive users. They're not consumptive users.
Bring that full circle, same thing as politics.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Get rid of that. But I was just reading some of these, the group posts in these deer things and like this Kathy lady, I'm not even gonna say. It was like, what are you talking? Like it made me wanna like fight as a hunter.
And you can't argue with the motion.
No, you can't.
You just.
No, it's just.
But that's why, if we take it off the table, you don't have to argue with that lady.
Yeah, right.
Problem, she can go view the deer and feed them.
They found, they found their, they found their guy. That's really interesting.
So, so again, I guess the next step then is we need another survey.
The hunters.
Like a real survey.
A survey, a legitimate survey, not, not some new technology survey with someone with a drone, an infrared thing. We want a traditional survey, what's out there? And let's see the real data. They don't want that. Cause they know what the data is gonna say.
Isn't that funny?
The data is gonna say plants, plants go away. You know, the deer are here to stay. They, they, they're not gonna, it's not gonna be able to back up what they said. No study out there will back up the data they have.
Vegans and the hunters team up to take down the buck.
And unfortunately, that's why we probably go to court, go to court to try to make them prove it. And when they prove it, we're gonna laugh their asses out of court.
Right.
We're gonna, we'll bring in biologists from other states. We'll bring in the state people and they'll say that this is outlandish. It's irrational. It's crazy.
I got a hunter guy, so I'm gonna keep asking questions. White deer.
Yes.
Sign of a sick herd.
No, not at all.
That's what she, that's what they said in the article.
Deer is just a sign of a recessive gene that's in there.
Not inbreeding, inbreeding?
In a sense, yes.
Okay.
But all deer are inbred. And if you look at it this way, here's why. The mother and her, her sisters stay together their whole life. So a mother and all of her siblings and their siblings, siblings, granddaughters, they stay together in a herd. They kick the young bucks out. If they got, say a buck and a doe were born one year, the mother will beat the hell out of that buck to chase him away. He'll go away four miles away and find his own territory.
Yeah.
And that's so he doesn't breed with the sisters. Mother nature's, mother nature's way.
Yeah.
When you get into a situation here, then he's going out this far and then he's breeding does there. And then those young ones are coming back this way.
You're getting cousins.
Then you got cousins still inbreeding. So you have inbreeding in a natural deer herd all the time. Cause deer don't migrate.
Yeah.
So what you have there, you know.
That makes sense.
I mean, they're probably not watching. So it's kinda like an Amish population.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You gotta add new genetics in now and then or whatever. It's something that you have to, uh, mother nature's ways to make the young males go away. When you're in a park setting and they can only go so far, and then you got, holy shit, here's the southern park mall.
Right.
And you go the other way. It's like, holy cow, here's Canfield. There really aren't too many places for those deer to migrate.
Makes sense.
So they may not be traveling as far to get away from their sisters. So you will have some inbreeding. But once you have a deer that has, that throws the white genes like the white buffalo.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You go shoot that white deer tomorrow and his brown sister might drop white fawns next year. Cause it's in their bloodline. It's, it's just something.
Yeah.
Then in the park, it just keeps reiterating itself over generation and generation. And you don't really notice it.
Hey, don't, listen, you fricking don't. You're the one, you're the one who was a hundred percent against hunting. Don't start with me lady.
Luke, what?
You're arguing with someone right now that just spelled deer wrong.
Yeah, and learn how to spell deer.
Please just stop wasting your time. I just can't, she was arguing with me on Facebook.
You're letting some random lady.
Listen, random lady, learn how to spell deer and then you can come back and fight with me. And you were wrong too, because you don't want to kill any deer. And I'm gonna go, I'm letting you know, when I get a deer this year, I'm gonna get two deer. I'm gonna name the first one I get the net and I'm gonna send you a picture on Facebook. I'm gonna let you know.
Thanks.
That is my cousin, the net.
Alright, I'm, I'm sending your cousin to net. This is Dennis, yeah.
Yeah, she's.
She likes animals.
Grew up a hunter and stuff. She comes from a hunting family. She just, she, she just believes what I believe. It's fake data. She's been in the meetings.
She was giving shit about hunting in general.
No, not, no, I don't believe that so much. I mean, she probably, she likes a little good argument.
Yeah, I'm gonna send you, I'm gonna send you.
You got in a fair fight.
I'm gonna send, I'm gonna send you a pack of fricking.
Hey, she spelled deer right that time. That's good.
I'm gonna send you a pack of deer jerky.
But, um, sorry. No, but, uh, emotions run high when it comes to animals. Just like on the news, animals always lead the news stories. And with this, it's animal related. I can't believe that the other citizens of Mill Creek, where Mahoning County aren't fighting more on the side of, show us the data. They had, they need to see this stuff, but that's what these people on Facebook.
Yeah.
They need to reiterate is quit, quit making a hunting versus non-hunting sharpshooter.
That's what they're trying to do.
Make it a, prove the data.
Yeah.
Prove, show us the data.
Yeah.
Show us how you got the data. Listen to the professional biologist.
That makes a lot more sense.
That does, that does.
That's like taking the legs right out from underneath them. Then there is no hunt. They, they gotta show us the data. They do another survey. They show that their, their data was wrong. Or someone lied.
Yeah.
My goodness, someone lied.
Party's over.
Then, yeah.
I could definitely see the rose garden people doing that. Definitely.
I've never, I've never seen a deer in the rose garden.
I know, but still, they just don't want the deer anywhere near.
Yeah, that makes sense.
They could do some damage up there.
Yeah.
I had a lady lost eleven thousand dollars with landscaping in Moreland Hills.
Hey, here, here's a, here's a, here's a good, uh, here's a good question. What is the MLO stance? And I know where she's asked it, or he's asked it. What is the MLO stance of putting a human in a deer costume for political purposes? I saw those pictures.
What is the MLO stance? I'm putting a human in.
Yeah, I don't have the pictures out, but there's a picture on your Facebook page of.
Him in a deer?
No.
I think I've seen that.
He, he was.
Kind of my mascot.
There was a mascot.
Deer wearing a Denny more. I mean, why not? It's your asset. It's what you do, right?
I mean, it works.
If you ran for politician, wouldn't you wanna help someone with insurance?
Exactly. I'll dress a deer for a mortgage.
Hey, and that kid right there is the best fricking human.
There you go.
Human, uh, experiment that I have.
So, so, um, I got, yeah, I guess that's it. So, so we covered the deer. Uh, I'm excited to see. So what do you think's gonna happen? You think they're gonna vote on it or not?
You know, I think they're gonna have their meeting next week. I don't think they're really gonna listen to people unless the people on the board, here, I mean, Judge Russo's done after this. If he doesn't do something.
Yeah.
He will never get elected office ever again.
Right.
People leading the charge. They may try to revoke the park levy, which, which the park has a fifteen year levy.
Yeah.
And they're only a couple of years into it. So that's why they're doing this now. Cause people were like, I'll never vote for a levy again. Well, guess what? Ten years from now, most of people will be dead anyway. And then there'll be a different director and you'll forget all about it.
Yeah, right.
So that's, there's timing involved with this.
People forget real fast. Yeah, that makes sense.
But they can try to revoke it. And, and I think the board members are gonna be split some way. Uh, I think they probably will allow the hunt and then they'll go to court, which I hope doesn't happen because then you're putting, hunting on the line and then the whole world, the whole county is gonna be hunt versus not hunt. And we don't want that. As hunters, we don't want that. Do what we do.
Right.
We don't want the big controversy. I don't want, I don't want people that have become friends now to be out there on opening day of a, of a hunt, running out there in a.
Yeah.
You know, getting themselves in trouble and being world news, you know, having CNN here. I don't want that.
Yeah.
You know, we, we just need, uh, cooler heads need to prevail here. The park needs, I mean, the park doesn't give up easy. I mean, basically when they try to run, that bike trail through trafficants farm.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Remember that?
Yeah.
Things up.
Yep. He said, hell no, never through my farm.
Yeah.
And his, his son-in-law and the neighbors are the ones that went together and went to court. And they went and got, lobbied a legislator and they got the eminent domain thing. Thrown the hell out. And now they, that, that was trafficants farm. They're trying to come.
Yeah, they were trying to go through trafficants and then lesses over there. That's our, that's our woods over there. Yeah.
So they won and they beat Aaron Young back and he's like, oh, I'll take him to court. I'll do this and that. Well, guess what? He lost.
Yeah.
Bitter when he loses. He's not a nice guy when he loses. And he's gonna lose this one too, unfortunately. I just hope he doesn't expend a lot of taxpayer money fighting it. And just realizes, lose it in the field. He's already beat.
Yeah.
He's already beat by public sentiment. Do what's right.
Interesting.
He knows this, he knows the data of this, that survey. He knows the real data. He knows the politics behind that data. The park employees that are there, they know what type of controversies they're wrapped up in right now.
Politics is so annoying.
It is very political, all of it, isn't it? It's all good fact of politics.
And it is. You gotta, you gotta judge who the points to board members and the judges of one or two political parties or whatever.
Yeah.
And he appoints board members and they're gonna be loyal to him. Cause he's the one that appointed him.
Wow.
You got Ben and all, I mean, this is a park district. This isn't what Rogers envisioned when he made the park.
Yeah.
This at all.
Wow.
You know, we just, cooler heads need to prevail on this. Show us the data.
Interesting.
And then once we see the real data, then we can make some.
And, and the thing about it is we're talking about the, the park is amazing. I'm going to, it's gonna be nice. It's gonna be nice tomorrow in the morning. I'm going hiking in the park. I mean, it's the.
Is it supposed to rain tomorrow?
Afternoon. I mean, it's beautiful. No, we're going to fricking dad's new furniture. Nevermind. So, alright, well, we're really, dude, we could go for like hours. Um, this is late, this is late for us. We normally go an hour and you gotta drive home. You're farther now. He's gonna, oh, he's gonna go like Trumbull County.
Yep.
You're far. How far is that?
It's like twenty minutes.
Oh, it's.
You guys talking about Trumbull County like it's another world.
Dude, it really is.
And that's one thing I, I brought up too.
I don't think I've ever been up there before. I don't want her up there.
It's like, why do we have this, this big border between Mahoning and Trumbull County? People don't cross.
I went up to your mall once. I was like, ew.
Their mall is so much.
We got the best mall in the world.
Their mall is so much better than our mall.
So much better.
So much better than ours.
It feels wrong cheating on our mall though. So I'm like.
I, I go up to the, like to that mall and I'm like, yeah, it's not that nice. This place is over.
I know.
This place is overrated. This place is overrated.
Trumbull County's got a lot going on. I mean, people realize, I mean, we got, we got more wildlife than any other county up here. We got eagles. We got bears. We got bobcats. We got river hunters. We got.
Mosquito.
Lake in the state.
Yep.
Three of the biggest wildlife areas north of Interstate seventy are in Trumbull County, Grand River, Shenango, mosquito.
Yep.
We got turkeys out the kazoo. I mean, it's, it's a great place to live.
Yeah.
And it's something when I grew up in Youngstown, if I wouldn't have been hunting up there with my dad when I was young, I never would have been in Trumbull County for anything. Trumbull County to me was like far away. People think like Jogga County.
Yeah, right.
Even heard of Jogga County.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I mean, nobody from Youngstown knows where Jogga County is.
Yeah.
It's, but it's there.
Yeah.
It's a big county.
Yeah.
But in Trumbull County, they just don't know. It's like, we got this imaginary wall where the Chamber Commerce, the Port Authority, East Gate, Y S U. They all manage this area. It's the Mahoning Valley.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then you got Mahoning County Commissioners on this side, Trumbull on this side. We never touch. We never meet. We never do anything together as a valley. We each do our own thing.
Yeah.
There's gotta be more of a valley approach. Cause this, with this area, if, if business comes to Lordstown, those people might live in Boardman or Austintown.
Yeah.
If business comes to North Jackson, they might live in Cortland or Champion or Sunnington. So there is crossover.
Yeah.
There is crossover between the two counties. And I think we need to manage the counties better that way. It's more of a crossover.
Have you ever tried to reach out to the, uh, Mahoning County Commissioner?
We just had a joint meeting just with the Port Authority a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
And, and I brought that up, that we need to do that more. Hopefully, hopefully it will, hopefully they'll put politics aside.
Okay, there's no way.
There's a little D on that side there.
There is no way. There is no way. There is one county commissioner, Mahoning County that would do that.
Anthony.
Anthony would do that. Anthony one hundred percent.
Reach out to me and said, let's, let's do this.
It's like, I know what I'm fricking talking about. And those other two, Carol Spaghetti and Ditzler, there is not a chance because they will die Democrat. Because they have both, uh, he was, you know, you know, Ditzer.
In the eighties, Trumbull County girls are the girls to go on a date with. How many people went to the VIP and cruised in the parking lot looking for a Trumbull County girl?
Todd, it's time for Todd to go to bed. Take your medicine, go to bed.
I like that guy. Cause that guy, he's just scratching. I'm, I'm, that's what we. He went hunting in Trumbull County, county for the women.
God, that is awesome. So yeah, there's no way. I don't, there's no way Ditzer will meet you because you're Republican. That's, that's just the way that asshole is. There's no way.
That's gonna be a loss for the valley then.
Yeah. Oh, he's hurting us.
Here, it's not a smart move.
No, he's hurting us. Oh, he's, he's gonna lose. He's losing this year. I'm, I'm gonna make sure of it. I'm, it's on my list though.
I just wish the best for the valley all the way along.
Yep.
Who's in power, no matter what party it is.
Yeah.